Warm up.
What's your kind thing, Mr. Floria? Look at that, alright.
Good morning, everyone. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance. The prayer today is, mighty Lord, bless us in this month of April. I pray that happiness be at your door. May it not early, stay late, and leave the gift of God's peace, joy, and good health behind. Amen.
Okay, item number one is the, uh, kind of commissioner, the commissioner's office requesting the board approve and execute the minutes of the meeting, March 18.
So.
Second.
Yes. Item number two, the commissioner's office is requesting the board approve and execute the minutes for the work section on March 18.
Second.
Yes. Financials.
Morning, Adrian Gordon from the commissioner's office. Today's financials include a supplemental request from the treasurer's office and their general fund repair services account for the replacement of two laptop computers in your office. So cash transfer from the commissioner's office to the unemployment rotary fund, transfer from the juvenile court general fund contract services account to the care and custody fund for the reimbursement of a grant that paid a portion of a drug testing bill that should have been paid by the general fund. Transfer from the general fund to community development for their first quarter 2025 payroll funding reimbursement and second quarter operational commitment for 2025, less that $15,000 advance that we gave them in December. And transfer from the general fund to soil and water for their 2025 local match funding request. Among the encumbrances are travel requests from the common police court technology to attend the 2025 Ohio Association of Court Administration Spring Conference and from the county engineer to attend the Echelon Front Leadership Assembly Training Program and from the public defender to attend the annual youth defender leadership summit. There's a then and now from the common police court to Step Mobile LLC for kiosk license and support payments from 2024 that were not previously encumbered and a formal contract purchase order from Job and Family Services to Preston Ford for a new 2025 Ford Escape replacement vehicle, replacing a 2014 Jeep Patriot which will be auctioned. Among the vouchers are $20,500 from ADP and Mike Kichka finishing Edge Incorporated for a used 2022 Hyundai Santa Cruz replacement vehicle for Archives, replacing a 2011 Chevy Impala and a 2013 Jeep Patriot that were traded in for $1,000 each. $805,884.64 from the commissioner's office to Infinity Construction Company for pay request number 18 of the courthouse expansion project. And finally, $750,000 from the commissioner's office to the Geoghi County Agricultural Society Fund for the construction of a new poultry and sale barn.
Adrian, can you talk a little bit about, um, the local match funding request that goes to soil and water?
So, we approve this, uh, the commissioners approve the amount that they get every year at their budget, um, meetings with the commissioners. Um, they do get, uh, a certain percentage of money from the state. So their annual funding requests that they get from us kind of depends a little bit on what the state funding is. And, um, I think they, this last year, they got a little bit more from the state, so our funding request did go down slightly for this year. But it, it usually is in this, in this ballpark.
I figured it was a state match, but that was part of what I wondered. This was a federal match or a state match?
State, yes.
That's all I had. Thank you. I'll, I'll move to approve the financials.
Yes. What's this one?
The common police court?
Yes, that's the one.
Oh, the new fund, okay. Um, we received a request from the common police court, uh, to establish a, a new fund uh, for them. So number four is the Court of Common Please. Their new leaf program is requesting the board approve and execute resolution 25-056, requesting the county auditor to establish a new fund called the One Ohio Foundation Fund for awarded grant funding and to properly account for salaries, contract services, materials and supplies, and other necessary items.
Do we know if this was recommended by the auditors officers? Is this the standard practice for?
This is, yeah, this is just standard practice for setting up a new account. And the, the state wants them, I think, to, uh, um, account for this money separately from everything else.
That's what I assumed. Alright, I'll make a motion to approve, uh, number four.
Yeah, so I just want to go a little deeper with this new leaf program, uh, with the One Ohio Foundation. They'll be, they'll be receiving $90,000 to, for a three-year period, uh, mostly for drug testing for the participants in the class, drug court class.
Right, okay.
So that's, that's what it was. And it's, uh, the first wave for Region 13 to, uh, part of the first wave of money for the first, from the Columbus, from the, uh, new leaf program, so.
Thank you, yes.
Are there, I mean, I know you're on the board, Mr. DeBork, were there other, um, projects in Giaga that were funded through the foundation?
Yeah, the, uh, we're gonna do a press release in June or July, but so we'll know exactly, uh, you know, where the, the other recipient is going to be Lake Jog Recovery Center, and they're receiving $300,000 to purchase a house for recovery. So it's still in the process, but it should be more details laid out in June or July. We'll do a press release at that.
And that's going to be located in Giaga?
Yes.
Okay.
The house that they purchased, because Lake County already has five recovery houses through Lake Jog Recovery and Jog County currently has two. So the next one to purchase in their thought process would be in Giaga, so.
And I think that was, uh, you, I think I got on a call a while back about that.
Yeah.
And we're inquiring about it, uh, so I think this is what that person may have been referring to.
Yeah, they were trying to figure out if they could still apply for it, I think, or?
Yeah, yeah, something like that, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Do you want me to stay for number six, or do you got that one? You got that one? The?
Yeah.
Number five, I mean.
It's just, um, the common police court, um, IT department is now requesting to submit an application for a credit card to the community, but they're only requesting a credit line of $6,000 in the through files. So that is what number five is. I move to approve, uh, number four.
Second.
Mr. Stiller.
Yes.
Uh, Matt Zarecki, Maintenance Department, uh, Contract Coordinator. I've got number six today. Uh, the maintenance department is requesting the board approve and execute the contract agreement with North Bay Construction Company for the Department of Emergency Services Generator Upgrade Project in the amount of $246,645. And the bid bonds submitted shall be held to serve as the performance bond for this project.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Yes.
Alright, thank you very much.
I'm sad to hear that you took another position, Matt.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Bittersweet, but I'm excited.
I was always impressed by your work here, so.
Well, thank you.
Good luck, I'm engineers.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Absolutely.
Kate.
Good morning.
Morning.
Charles Tekech, uh, the Maintenance Department. Um, I have items number seven and eight on the agenda. We'll start with number seven. Uh, the Maintenance Department is requesting the board approve and execute the agreement for professional design services with Tech Incorporated to, uh, to provide professional design and contract administration services related to replacing the existing condenser unit and upgrading chiller components as required to comply with current building codes and EPA regulations at the West Giaga Senior Center for the period of April 1st, 2025 through February 28th, 2026, in an amount not to exceed $19,500.
Did you add all these blank pages in your documentation to see if I was paying attention?
Yeah.
I was like, every other page was a blank page. I was paying attention. Um, so what do you think the estimated cost will be for this full project?
Uh, we're, we're looking at around, uh, 150.
Okay.
Um, but we'll know for sure once we get the engineering estimates back. As to what all has to be changed out because the EPA rules have changed.
Oh, so that was my next question, was just, you know, I saw it was because of building code and EPA rules. So what, you know, what are we looking at as far as those changes?
Well, previously, we were just going to change out the condenser, but with the new codes, we might be required to change out the air handler plus a number of the, uh, of the other components and add additional monitoring devices. So we won't know until we get deep into the code, but it, it, it looks like those at a minimum now will need to be changed out.
Okay, sounds expensive. I'll make a motion to approve seven.
Second.
Yes.
Just so you know, because this serves the senior population that, um, applies under CBPG, we are going to be looking at making a CBPG grant request for this project.
Oh, great. That's great.
Is it 9:45 yet?
No, yeah, five minutes.
We'll go on, we'll get back to you.
So we'll, we'll move on to, uh, item number nine, Water Resources.
Morning.
Good morning.
Nick Goris, Water Resources. Um, item on the agenda is requesting the board approve and execute a service contract with PerkinElmer US LLC for form preventative maintenance and repairs as needed for one year down at the lab, um, effective April 1st in an amount not to exceed $12,000. So this is our, for our ICP machine, um, so that this is what we use to break down our water samples and our sewer samples. Currently, it's down and we are sending things out, so getting this taken care of will, uh, get us back where we need to be.
So I noticed the quote was for about 5,500, so how are we getting to the 12,000?
So the 12 is in case of parts. If there's other parts that need, so the quote to come in and do the service. Okay, you know, that, yeah, one year, but if there's actual extra quote or parts that are needed.
Right, right.
We estimate it within.
Okay, that makes sense. I'll make a motion to approve, uh, number nine.
Second.
Yes, thank you.
Shall we jump to item 11? Yes. The commissioner's office is requesting the board approve and authorize the president of the board to execute change order number five, increasing the contract with Infinity Construction Company Incorporated for the Giaga County Courthouse Expansion, GMP Phase Two, for the fire alarm custom audio messaging system in the amount of $7,701. As you recall, you guys have already approved this, but this is the actual AAA form that we received from the contractor. And this is for the silent alarm system that the sheriff requested.
And do we, do we know if there's like a plan in place on how to implement this audio messaging or, or someone's going to come up with that?
They're working on that.
Okay.
They are selecting the messages, what voice will be, who and people will be trained in, when it will be used, who will use it. Um, and that will be under the purview of the sheriff.
Alright, I'll make a motion to approve 11 with two minutes to spare.
Second.
Yes.
Do you want to move to item 12?
Yeah, let's move to item 12. Is it not 9:45 yet for?
The commissioner's office is requesting the board approve the rehire and appointment of Dan Spada to the position of Chief Building Official, number 1101, to be effective April 7th, 2025, at the rate of $53.14 per hour, grade E17, step 10.
Make that motion.
Second.
Yes.
If we have a little more time, um, I have a request from one of the commissioners to have an executive session today to talk about the purchase of property. Um, if, if you guys are open to that, we can do that at the end.
Okay. Let me jot that down.
Should we do that, um, after public comment, or?
That would be up to you guys. I would do that after public comment.
If there's, if there's no, um, we're not expecting an action.
There might, yeah.
Oh, okay, then maybe do it before public comment.
However, you guys want to.
Okay, you, these have been two signatures, I have one minute.
One, one minute before, I don't need.
So if the number of the statutory group wanted to come to our room. You're allowed to sit down?
I think there's five of us, right?
Uh, no, I don't, because the, I think there's, there's a chair for you, Randy.
Alright.
Oh, yes. There's another chair over here on the side.
Okay.
If you want to sit or even stand, whatever you.
I know the meeting hasn't started yet, and I would like to make the comment that the, uh, information in this packet is not public record, so we won't be sharing yet with the public.
So each one of you passes the packet, it's, it's ready to clear. I think 9:45, so we will open the statutory group meetings.
Good morning, I'm Charles Tekech with the Maintenance Department, and I'm going to go over the, um, scope of what we're doing today and just review the drawings. And at the end of the day, we're listening for an approval by the statutory group, um, for the design of a, um, safety center room visitation, um, alterations. I do have the letters, um, I was going to pass them out right, right at the end before we go.
Perfect, thank you.
Um, it is declared and determined that all formal actions, um, of the Board of Commissioners concerning and, uh, concerning and relating to the adoption of any resolutions from this meeting and all deliberations of the Board of County Commissioners that resulted in such formal action were open to the public and were in compliance with legal requirements, including section 121.22 of the Ohio Revised Code. Also pursuant to section 149.433 of the Revised Code, the safety center visitation room alteration, design drawings, and specifications presented for review during this statutory group meeting are infrastructure records of a public office and are not a public record under section 149.33 of the Revised Code and are not subject to mandatory release or disclosure. The commissioner's office is requesting that the statutory group, which consists of the Board of Commissioners, the sheriff, pro-bag judge, clerk of court, and judge of court of common pleas, to review and, if appropriate, approved by a majority of the statutory group, the current plans, drawing, representation, bills and materials, specifications of work, and estimates of cost thereof in detail and in the aggregate for the proposed York County Safety Center Visitation Room alterations as required by Revised Code 153.36. Uh, we have, um, all three commissioners in attendance today, Commissioner DeBork, Commissioner Brakey, and Commissioner Spock Larry. Uh, we also have, um, the sheriff, um, Delbrand, and, uh, Judge Carolyn, no? Oh, you're the clerk of court.
Do you want to be judge?
No. Sorry, I haven't had all these fun. Uh, clerk of court, Sheila Bevington, and?
Magistrate Randy Taylor.
Magistrate Randy Taylor. For the courts, okay? Um, alright, so the project is, um, taking the existing approximately 450 square foot visitation room. It's a video visitation room, uh, that consisted of 10 outdated video monitoring stations. Um, these monitors have not been used for some period of time and have been replaced by three video visitation wall-mounted phones, uh, which really utilize considerable space. So the goal of this project is to reconfigure that existing space into two separate rooms. A reduced approximately 86 square foot video visitation room two, which is, um, an adequate space to house the three video phones and then convert the remaining approximately 364 square foot space into office space for jail operations, health, and environmental specialists. Okay, the project consists. Okay, the project consists of the removal and demolition of the existing ten station video visitation booths and wall. Structural modifications to the floor to support the installation of a new eight inch block wall that separates the video visitation space from the jail operation space. Modifying HVAC electrical and fire suppression systems according to the new room layout. Roughing conduit for relocation of video conferencing and CCTV and data network cabling and connection device installations and refinishing floors, walls and ceiling, including the installation of sound absorption panels. Um, the estimate for this, which is attached, the total estimate is one hundred and fifty thousand, seven hundred dollars. Uh, that's the engineering estimate for the construction cost. And it's broken down into a number of work categories, which is broken down on your attached estimate. If you wanted to review the drawings real quick, the first page is just a location map and you'll see in the bottom right hand corner the location of the video visitation room uh within the uh jail facility. And going on to page A one, um, it just starts from the left, shows um just a location of the video visitation room um as you enter the front door. And then as you move to the right, it shows the demolition of the ten station wall. And then the far right drawing shows the installation of a new eight inch block wall that will house the, the um smaller video visitation room and then the larger office space. Turning on to page um A one one, on uh, on the left is just what the existing visitation booths look like. Those will be demo. The next one is the proposed wall section that will be replaced by that. And then the two drawings on the right, the bottom one shows the existing ceiling plan and then shows the uh new ceiling plan with the reconfigured light fixtures and also the relocation of speakers and CCTV. Um, the next drawing, if you go to the next drawing, it shows the mechanicals. Um, since we are taking one room and turning it into two, we need to rework the HVAC system, HVAC system with the uh with the air handling and so forth. So the middle drawing shows the demolition of the existing HVAC ductwork that needs to be done. And then the far right drawing shows the installation of the new HVAC ductwork that is, is going to be installed. The next page is just some specifications. These drawings, since, since it's a small project, all the specifications are included on the drawing, so there's not a separate technical specification document. And then the last page is just the electrical plan. You'll see in the middle is the demolition and then on the far right will be the new lighting system as well as the new electrical outlets and the data network connections and cabling that will be installed. And as I said, um, the other attachment is the estimate. The front page just shows the consolidated view and the other pages behind it shows the breakdown of each work discipline and what the cost of, of um each of those disciplines are that would then roll up to the hundred and fifty thousand, seven hundred dollars. So with that, I just wanted to go around and see if there were any questions that, or any clarifications that are needed with drawings.
Make sure that the cost came up from the engineer.
Correct.
They're just estimates.
These are engineering estimates and that once we send this out to bid and get the bids back, the bid uh will need to be within twenty percent of this estimate or else we will have to rebid. Uh, so this is the approximate estimate.
Yes. Some, some of the costs seem quite frankly ridiculous. I mean, painting the interior is seven thousand dollars.
I thought that seemed high too, Sheriff.
I could probably do it for five. Um, just the ceiling is three thousand dollars for painting that. Well, I, I, you know, two steel, stainless steel partitions at five thousand dollars a piece. I think we could probably be better than that. Um, and I don't know if they have to be stainless. And then, you know, the electrical system and telecommunications, I assume that's the phone.
Yes.
And, you know, three thousand dollars for the two phones, that sounds kind of high.
Well, that's the cabling to run within the walls.
There must be some very valuable cable. The um, I hope that, that the, the, the bid comes in less than, much less than this because it seems um pretty high on some of these estimates and maybe they do that on purpose. I don't know. Um, just some background for you guys, you know, that, that building was designed over twenty years ago and uh, you know, the technology has changed. Uh, we don't have people coming in to visit like we used to. Um, because there's, there's other technology that they can visit from home. They can visit in the pods, you know, it's all video and, and so it's really uh not utilized to have ten people there. What, I don't think there was ever ten people there at the time visiting. But uh, you know, the biggest problem in the jail and the biggest problem in this uh, this country is uh mental health and addiction problems. And that's what these rooms are for, is for the mental health people to have a place to work. Uh, right now they're trying to work on the backside of this um visitation in a very small room. Um, it's a very important part of the jail. And, and like I said, it's, it's the biggest problem that we have is mental health and addiction. And, and this is one way um that we can help those people be more comfortable, maybe get uh some uh more progress. Uh, they can be more efficient and it's, it's uh absolutely needed unfortunately, but um that's exactly what we need to do and, and it's under unutilized areas of the jail. And uh, I think this will be a great addition that there when we can get this completed and done.
Do you have full-time staff that are handling addiction and mental health issues?
Um, I don't think, we don't have any employees. They come from Ravenwood and, and other areas, but um they're there all the time because because of the need, quite frankly.
Well, I feel it's time to modernize, you know, for the technology and the way people view their family and friends or whatever. So I think this is a good project.
And I just have a dumb question, but so we have to pay a building permit fee? Government doesn't exempt. Good luck. You're putting one, one in one pocket.
We are including it in the cost in case there, you know, it is required, but we, we, you know, we do expect a lot of those fees to be.
Okay, all right, wonderful. Sounds like I just saved a carry on fifteen hundred bucks.
So then the next step in the process is I will hand out a um letter uh from the Maintenance Department uh basically asking uh based on your review, whether or not you would approve this project or you don't approve project. And then um the majority approval would um allow the project to move forward.
So I um, I'm going to have him to do a roll and then we approve or not approve. So Commissioner DeWarre.
Yes.
Mr. Brakey.
Hi.
Mr. Spottler.
Yes.
Sheriff Delbrand.
Yes.
Ms. Bevington?
Yes.
Um, Probing Court Judge Timothy Grandal was invited but not present today. And Representative Magistrate Randy Taylor for the Court of Common, please, for Judge Carolyn.
Yes.
Thank you. Record your um, both and sign those. And then you will collect those.
You're going to collect.
Where do you, where do you want them to go to you?
You can, um, you can set it in the basket and then uh we have to send those, the copy of the plans that are approved to me.
Thank you everyone for taking time to review this. Thank you.
All right, and I have the statutory group meeting closed at nine fifty-nine.
I think we went this way.
I'm sure.
We debated. We went this way.
Yeah, just put them in the basket.
Okay.
And we'll put them all with that one each other, copy of your um, dispatch and get the, a few plans to me.
All right.
All right. Take us back to um, I don't know where it's kind of me and you though.
Yeah. Discussion regarding Airport Authority with representatives from Airport Authority and the Airwolf Aerospace LLC.
Morning.
Good morning.
Just here to resurrect our request for funding for the T hangar building that was approved by the county back in December, the commissioners. And I know there's been discussion uh several different directions since that time, uh but we would like to here again today to request that funding uh for a T hangar, a unit T hangar, uh one point three three million dollars, uh which we expect to get up by five hundred and eighty thousand dollars of federal funding uh to offset that cost. The original intent was to take money that was uh of the one point three three, five hundred and eighty thousand from federal government. Once we received the money from the federal government, then we would use the leftover remaining funds to improve other county buildings on the field, roofs, expansions, painting, doors, things like that. So we're here today to continue that. Uh, if we do not act on this uh and get our file, we cannot do a file application until the project is bid out. Currently the project is out to bid. Uh, we had to do that uh just to get it under the, under the deadline. Uh, so we have the final bid amounts that go to the FAA by the end of April. If we do, we do not do that, by that time we lose federal funding. So we would like to get the commissioners to help us through this process and allow us to move forward.
Isn't that uh FAA grant closer to five hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars?
Five hundred, it, it, five hundred eighty.
Six.
Five hundred eighty-six thousand.
Okay.
Okay.
May I ask if you have to have the funds in order to get the FAA funds or do you get the FAA funds either way?
I'm trying to figure out your question.
Do you have to have additional money in order to qualify for the, or do you get it either way?
Well, we can't work the project without the funding from the county.
Uh, uh, separate from the project, just in general, if you didn't have that money, you weren't doing the T hangar, would you still get the five hundred and eighty-six thousand? It has to be used for a T hangar?
And that's what our, we have a pre-application, it's already been approved for a T hangar.
Thank you.
Yes.
Have you provided the pre-application to the commissioners?
Yes. That was done in December.
Okay, I haven't received. I, to be honest, I haven't received any documentation for this entire project. I, I don't think I've had one.
I find it very hard to believe. We, everything was requested of us. We have supplied to this office.
I, I haven't seen, I haven't seen anything related to the T hangar project.
Everything that was requested was delivered to the county commissioner's office.
I mean, I have, I have meeting minutes. I have the agreement between um, you know, the authority and the commissioners, but I don't have anything related to this project. I mean, everyone that comes in front of us, they provide us documentation. I mean, we had, I don't, you know, a uh request for twelve thousand dollars and we get fifty-two pages of documents for it. So I, I just haven't seen a single. I mean, maybe I'm missing something. Gentlemen, have you?
I haven't received personally anything. So unless it was sent directly to the board directly, it never came through me on regard to like plans or anything regarding the team.
Listen, we've sent things in that requested of us.
Not to me. I don't have anything on this project.
Was that, was that back in December?
I just have.
There, there were things sent in December. There were requests made from Commissioner Brakey.
Well, I, I mean, I have this, but this has nothing to do with the current T hangar. I've got, that's what I'm saying.
There was a request by you in an email with several, several bullet points that was responded to.
Right.
And was submitted.
So I, I got documents, but I didn't get anything about the T hangar. You're asking me to approve uh funding about this T hangar project and you've given me zero documents.
I mean, back again, back in December, we provided to the county commissioners' office and it was approved at that time. And I, and I mean.
I have no physical documentation regarding the T hangar. You guys came in and publicly talked to the board about it that day when they approved the funding, but there was no physical like documentation provided regarding the project. I know you guys were in the process of revamping the plans um to be able to move forward.
There was a pre-app, um, December seventeenth was the commissioners' meeting, the week prior to that, and pre-app was approved by the county commissioner.
Is, is that correct, Ms. Blair, to your understanding?
To my knowledge.
So, so you never received the pre-application? The commissioners' office never received?
Just they came in to request the funding and then the wording for the funding to that.
Now, I thought you guys sent the language to the prosecutor maybe a month ago about the FAA grant of five hundred and eighty-six thousand.
This information has been circulated since December, Commissioner DeWarre.
Yeah. But without.
I do not have claims.
Previous administrator, hopefully he, he got that information out, so.
Well, I mean, I haven't, I haven't received one paper about this hang, this particular hangar project. So I mean, I mean, my fellow commissioners, have you received any documentation about this project?
Rick actually had shown us, uh, shown us drawings of it.
Okay.
Actual schematics of what layout was going to be.
And were those like sent to your county email? How?
It was, I, no, I saw it, I believe from, from him. And I can't recall right now if it was presented to us in in session or how, but um you know, this has been something that we've discussed a, a long, before December.
Oh, yeah, it's been going on for over a year.
Way before December.
Yes.
Have, have you provided any documentation regarding the financials for this project? Like, I mean, even like a napkin with some numbers on it? Because I.
I, I, I I mean, we'd have to go back and check our emails.
Okay.
But we, we have submitted information.
Okay.
I, I mean, I'm, I'm.
Let's, let's do that. Let's do that public reference request and see what's been submitted. I, I would love to have the same documents.
It's, it's all right here. I mean, and, and this is the estimate of the, of the, excuse me. I'm stumbling because you caught me off guard. This is the engineers' estimate for the T hangar project.
Great. I mean, this is my first time seeing this.
And I, I think I picked that up from Rick a couple of months ago, what you just.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, the only thing that we, we received was the list of the documentation that you had sent to them in the email that had your list of outstanding projects and stuff that you wanted to go along with that.
Which was this list, which has been submitted.
Correct, but there was no, like, you were in the process of revamping your bid specifications for the project and then I never received them personally. So I know that Commissioner Spottler and Commissioner DeWarre both went to the Airport Authority individually and met with you about the project. You know that because that was talked about in December. But physically receiving any actual paperwork on the project, I had not personally received any.
I mean, I would also be interested in seeing like the finances for this once it's built. So I, I mean, I see this is what it's going to cost. But then what are you charging for rent? What are utilities going to cost? What is the maintenance going to cost? What does this long term look like? Because I mean, in the documents we did provide, me, I'm looking at this current hangar you have. Let's see which one. It's the Alpha Hangar. And you're losing almost two thousand dollars a year on that. That, that project is cash flow negative. So why would the commissioners invest further money to buy another hangar when your current hangar is losing money every year? I mean, these are your own documents you're providing.
I understand, I understand.
I mean, that's like saying I have a widget factory. It's losing a million dollars a year. Will you invest my?
Long-term, that hangar will produce millions of dollars of revenue.
Show me those documents to prove that to me.
Okay.
And show me that for the, for this new hangar too, because all I have right now is this document telling me you're losing money and you want to build a new hangar. That's also going to.
Thirty-eight hundred dollars a month positive cash flow when the building is paid for.
For, for what? The old project or the new project?
The new T hangar is approximately thirty-eight hundred dollars a month positive.
That's just in, in rent or that's?
That's just rental, rental income.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, these, like, these sort of numbers are like helpful to me in making decisions. And so whatever I can get as far as numbers.
We will go back and check our communications because we have sent information to the county for this project over the last year.
I mean, that may be true, but I know what I have and I have.
You're, you're new by two months, ma'am, and I apologize. We the information sent to the county commissioners over the last year maybe should have been forwarded to you. It's already in the office.
I, I mean, but Ms. Blair is saying that there isn't information in the office.
She just said there was.
No.
No, you sent the email that you have in your hand directly to all of them.
Mm-hmm.
And she was part of that. I'm talking about the actual schematics and the breakdown of the actual T hangar project, like information about the actual project. That was never sent to me.
Okay.
Mister, that's what I'm saying is, Mr. Spottler, if Mr. DeWarre met with you guys individually at the airport, but it wasn't done openly so that I would have received it. That's all I'm saying.
And I apologize for not giving you a copy of mine, hard copy that I got from Rick. And I apologize for not giving you a copy of mine, hard copy that I got from Rick. And again, in December and January, it was a lot of changes within our office.
When we come to a county commissioners' meeting and we have papers in our hands, we discuss them. I mean, that's, that's providing information.
Okay, but everybody else provides me documentation. And then I read those documents ahead of time and then I'm prepared to ask questions. And I can analyze it because I mean, I can look at your old, like, you know, you gave me this about the old hangar. And I can look at that and I say, can say you're cash flow negative, those sort of documents ahead of time are helpful to me.
I, I, I don't doubt that. And I'm not arguing with that. It's just that we, we will find information where we have forward information to county offices over the last year. I just don't have that in my hands right now.
Okay, great.
And the issue at hand is if we don't get money by the end of the month and approval, we lose federal funding.
Right.
It's bottom line.
And I, I don't want to do, I don't want to, uh, walk away from five hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars from the federal, from FAA. And for five, about five months, six months, uh, I have enough information for myself to make a motion. And it's, it's not going to be for one point three, three. It's a compromise uh, to capture the five, five eighty-six, uh, grant from the FAA. But I make a motion to create a resolution to give eight hundred thousand dollars to the Airport Construction Fund. This would be for a new T hangar. These funds, along with the FAA grant of five hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars would be enough to build a new T hangar. This new T hangar would create a profit of around thirty-eight thousand dollars a year. Uh, with both the eight hundred thousand dollars and the eight hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars, there would be around fifty thousand dollars or more to go towards building improvements at the airport. The funds, funds made from this new T hangar would be used for improvements for the buildings around the airport. So I I thought about this long and hard. I don't want to walk away from free money from the federal government. Uh, and I look at my, my job as a commissioner, a steward of the taxpayers' property, buildings, and, uh, the taxpayers own the property, our names are on the deed, but, uh, I want to be a good steward to our taxpayers and those are our buildings and I don't want to have a roof caved in or anything else. I want improvement with the airport buildings and any other buildings in the county. So that's my motion uh, to create a resolution, we'd have it ready for next week. And, uh, that way we, you secure some documentation to the FAA that you have eight hundred thousand dollars along with their grant to create this new T hangar, to create funds to have money to spend and improve the buildings of the airport.
So, Mr. Dorf, to, to clarify, are you suggesting there is no agreement then regarding this money between the Airport Authority and the Board of Commissioners?
That's why I made the motion, to create a resolution.
But
Have documentation at, at this time.
So there would be no, there would be no agreement saying, specifying exactly how?
I think in the resolution, we, we can plug in, uh, our concerns, but really based on my motion. Is there a second to the motion?
So I'll, I'll second that, but with the comment, so I think that the, where, where the, the confusion is coming from and I think that it's an unfortunate situation with the Airport Authority getting, you know, kind of thrown under the bus in this one is that, you know, all three of the commissioners were engaged with the airport commissioners the entire time of this happening. What we were basically looking at doing was is to transfer funds to the Airport Authority for you guys to be able to handle your, you know, process of the dollars that were going to be, that were going to be done. And in December, we all agreed after individually sitting down with each of the, with, with the board to understand and get a complete understanding of what the project was. I had no questions that the direction we were going was, was a great direction. And it would have been no different than similar, or similar to what we did with the Fair Board, where that, where those dollars were basically transferred for them to handle the project within the fairground of their new poultry building. So as far as the whole building aspect of this, I was making the decision in December and I, I know that, you know, the other two commissioners were making that decision based on what we had seen and what you guys had presented to us individually so that we had a, a very deep look at everything that was going on. And, and that, and that's how that whole thing was going to be able to, um, that transaction was supposed to be made, was supposed to be from us transferring you guys approximately one point three million. And then when you guys had the, um, grant come back for that funding, then you would basically put it towards all of your other operations that you, you know, so dearly need. So I think that that's truly the, the answer to all of these questions of did you see this or did you not see this? I, I saw everything that you, you showed me, which included the schematics of the, of the building, placement of the building, the costs and everything for us to be able to feel comfortable at that time to make that decision. So I'm not, I'm not, um, confused at all with that number. I think that we're still in a position that I don't know is that eight hundred thousand dollars enough for, for this project to happen?
That's based by estimates, it'll, it'll bill as a building. But will it help us fence roofs and add on to the U H living waters now?
And is, is that going to be a sufficient match that we're not going to end up losing? If it's based on a percentage, i- is, is our portion not need to be a certain amount to be able to get back a certain amount? Is it based on a percentage of what our match is?
We were allocated so much per year to put towards the project.
Okay.
And I believe what the local match, if that affects that.
Okay.
Before the commissioners make a decision, would you like to hear from the business community? Before we make a resolution? Let's, let's finish this much.
Uh, well, I mean, I'll just say, I'm not against the airport, I'm, I'm personally just for the taxpayers. And I mean, everything on this agenda, I start from no. My, unless I secure otherwise. So every single thing, I mean, unless it's a resolution for the Girl Scouts, I'll just, you know, I'll give that one a yes. But otherwise, I, I started no, especially if it's a spending decision. And then I move to yes if I have a responsible, a well-supported case being made. And here, there's like, there's no case being made, it's just emotional appeals, there's vague assurances and there's zero documentation. So that's where I'm at right now with this project.
Most of it's made and seconded?
Ms. Blair.
I
No.
Which is what?
Yes.
Thank you. And also, of, of tenant, who is also business owner and business tenant of the airport, Mr. Cochi, uh, would like to say a few things.
And he, he's representing Air, Airwolf?
Yeah, he's a, a local businessman.
Okay, got it. Mr. Cochi, you have the floor for a couple of minutes?
I'm on the agenda, I have all the time I need, right?
Take it away.
Okay. And I don't understand protocol, so I guess I come up here and sit down and talk.
You introduce yourself and state where you live and
Okay, my name is John Cochi, I'm the president, owner of Airwolf Aerospace, I live in Middlefield, Ohio. And currently I'm shell shocked that this whole airport discussion about improving the airports going on for a year and all of a sudden it's a surprise to the new commissioner because things weren't presented in paperwork. Even though it's been submitted to the, the, the county commissioners, all three of them agree to this and it's just a shock. I'm gonna start off with, uh, I was at a, I've been a, um, longtime business owner and a pilot Jogga County resident. I've been flying at the Jogga County Airport for fifty years. Started in nineteen seventy-five when at the airport there was one tiny little rundown hangar. I was here when all the hangars were built. I was at a local education function just recently casually asked when we're breaking ground for the new hangar and I got, didn't you hear commissioners pulled the funding, funding? I was livid. It feels like Groundhog Day all over again. Another new commissioner who runs on a platform or saying she supports the airport, only to pull the rug out from underneath after three previous commissioners, two of which are businessmen, unanimously voted to fund the airport with this major grant. I'm not an expert in contract law, but I know firms that are, and it sure sounds to me that someone's attempting to break a contract with the Airport Authority. Pilots are smart, successful people. They're precisely what Jogga County should be attracting. Smart, successful people that happen to be aircraft owners and business owners. Are you really saying that smart people stay away from Jogga County? Smart people pay the majority of the taxes, employ the majority of the people. For the past forty to fifty years, I've seen very little improvement at the airport. Only in the last ten has there been any major improvements. Hangar repairs that should have been made years ago are still languishing. I'm gonna go and address a, a, a handout they gave me from the Times Courier, March thirteenth, titled, "Braking Pumps Brakes on the Airport." All I know is about what I read. I wasn't at the meeting, I know nothing else but I read, so I'd like to address key points that I saw here. The comment was made affirmative allegation to maintain yours. Really? With what money? These are county-owned buildings on county-owned property. The county has the luxury of a volunteer group of business people who operate their county airport for free and don't receive a penny of compensation. Solely for the good of the county. Yet the county provides zero day-to-day funding. And you have the part-time airport manager that does a fabulous job getting almost six hundred thousand dollars of hard-fought federal dollars for airport. So what's with the remark that the deal makes no sense because the airport keeps all the revenue? What revenue? The only revenue the air, airport makes is from rent and fuel sales. Up until a few years ago, only tenants had a key to the fuel pump. If a transient airplane from another county or state flew to Jogga County and forgot to fill up before they left, unless they knew how to find somebody with a key, they were stranded. How is the airport supposed to attract visitors to such an affluent county like Jogga when they couldn't even purchase gas? Wouldn't take your car someplace if you couldn't buy gas? Since fuel sales are major funding for the airport, aren't more fuel sales better? This seems like business one-on-one to me. The more tenants they have, they have, the more fuel they sell. So forty-two more tenants potential that have formally committed to basing their aircraft at Jogga is a really good thing for the county. Why in the world would you make the outstate, land a statement of welfare for aircraft owners? I'm not smiling. Welfare? How about hit commissioners? It's about time you invested in your airport to make it more attractive. Subsidize someone's hobby? Give me a break. County, state, federal dollars used all the time to support marinas where the majority of boat owners own boats strictly for pleasure. I don't look down on them. So why do non-aviation people think it's okay to say it's, we're not going to support the county-owned airport unless it's a hundred percent used by the business community? You said you've got people that the county's struggling to pay their property taxes. What in the world does that have to do with improving the airport? Sounds like you're frustration with being the county auditor. FYI, I pay over forty percent of my yearly income in taxes. You need more business people like me who pay a lot of taxes to benefit this county. Let me digress on the lack of hangar repairs. I am sixty-nine years old and proud of it. The four doors on hangar two where I keep my airplane are eighteen feet tall and weigh a thousand pounds each. It takes every ounce of my strength to manually push open all those four doors to get my airplane out of the hangar. Once I pull it out, I have to push those blasted doors closed. Four of them, a thousand pound each. At the end of the fifteen minutes, I'm exhausted. They should have been replaced years ago. Hangar three just got a new door that opens hydraulically with the push of a button. And I was told that new door is coming from my hangar in the improvement package that was just rescinded by the board. By the commissioners, excuse me. Why don't you come out to the hangar and help me open the doors and see how difficult this is to do? You wouldn't put up with it for a second. These are county-owned buildings and the county has neglect, been negligent in modernizing. The doors leak like seeps. The cold winds from the north make it expensive to heat in the winter. The openings at the top of the door, the doors allow the darn birds that crap all over the hangared aircraft and bird poop is very corrosive to aluminum. I'm not blaming the Airport Authority as they're doing their best they can operating your airport with no funding. So why are you trying to blame them for the county's negligence? You're turning down six hundred thousand dollars of federal dollars that will go to improving the airport and finally get much-needed maintenance to justify by stating I wouldn't be wasting one point three million in a hangar that would be completely full of tenants. That's a definition of insanity. Expecting a different result, doing the same thing over and over again, which is not funding the airport, saying, why don't business people use it? You use the word malicious. Definition to me is fallacy, tending to deceive or mislead. How in the world could you make such a malicious statement? There's no intent to mislead. The intent is to cater to the commissioners that the county airport is good for the community. Aircraft are time machines. The only one thing that no one can make more of is time. An aircraft lets business people travel to out-of-the-way places on their schedules, not some airliners that take a full day to get somewhere and get a full day back. A perfect, I'll give you a perfect example. Two weeks ago, the Director of Maintenance of Mercy Flight in Buffalo approached me at a recent World Helicopter Convention in Dallas and said they were having a terrible, terrible time of their battery life in their new, in their, excuse me, uh, terrible time of their battery life and wanted to know how soon we can provide a solution for their four new helicopters that they just spent sixty million dollars on. There's a nonprofit organization there to save lives. I said our plane was really full, but when you, when you get a chance and you get one of your ships up for maintenance, I could see if I could make, come up there and look at it. I get, get, then I get a call last Wednesday saying the ship would be available on Thursday, could I be there first thing in the morning to look at it? I said, man, it's really short notice, but I'll be there. Our plane was in the maintenance, so I took our helicopter. Left at eight, arrived at nine, talked till ten, arrived back in Middlefield, eleven-thirty. Had a quick lunch and got to spend the next five hours working productively in my office. I could have never done that using airlines or driving. I picked up five hours that day. Once we get this thing approved, we have a, we, we work with the FAA, we have a new product coming out. As soon as we're done, we'll be visiting Jogga Counties all over Midwest, from the Mississippi River east down to Dallas. Our plane can, our plane allows us to be in Philadelphia in an hour and four minutes. Mount area, North Carolina, an hour and twenty-five. Louisville in an hour and eighteen. So when we arrive, we get our work done, we fly right back. Sometimes we make multiple stops, we can still get back that night. It's never gonna happen using the airlines. And in case you haven't read the latest news, the airlines just stopped allowing anyone to fly standby on an earlier flight, so all those business people who finished their work early have been barely tolerating, the airline service will start researching options, which is business aircraft ownership. There's nothing new to the same thing happened twenty years ago. When airlines do stupid things, business aviation grows. Do you say you won't support any improvements in the airport until you hear from business community? I am speaking for the business community and tell you, if you want to attract more business to the airport into the county, you need to make major improvements to the airport, which includes lengthening the runway. Until it is a bare minimum of four thousand feet and ideally forty-five hundred feet, the operators of today's corporate aircraft, which are primarily small, very efficient, very quiet jets, will not use this airport. In fact, the electronic charts that they use to land an air, and at an airport in bad weather do not show any airport with at least four thousand foot of usable runway. So for all intent and purposes, the Jogga County Airport does not exist to business aviation. Our company operates one of the largest twin-engine jet-powered aircraft with propellers. It's called a turboprop. It's the same type of aircraft used by commuter airlines for years until the majors convinced the public they should only fly in airplanes without propellers. Those are called jets. The advantage of having propellers is when we land in short runways like a Jogga County, we can use our propellers as air brakes to slow down. It's the same feeling you get in airliner when they put their thrust reverses on and makes you lurch forward in the seat. The only problem is all these new high efficient, highly efficient private jets, which obsolete all the turboprops, only have wheel brakes to stop the aircraft, which means they need longer runways. The pilot who flies our aircraft also flies other aircraft owners as a contract pilot. He currently flies a business jet for a local resident every Tuesday and Friday and back and forth to Southern Alabama. He'd have been here today, but he's on his way to Alabama. The owner asked him if he has a closer airport for him to base it at, meaning Jogga, and he said, nope, runway too short. There are many Jogga County businesses that have a corporate aircraft. They need to be hangard at Jogga, have just happened to be hangard at Jogga County or Lost Nation or, or Akron, they need a longer runway. When I was at the airport the other day, the, um, Rick Blamer told me that the hospital, which we have the great fortune of having a EMS hospital based at the county, is, would love to have a place to park their squad when they come to visit the crew. Because right now, they have, if they come to visit the airport either in the summer or the winter, they have to leave their squad running twenty-four hours. They can never shut it off because they have scheduled drugs inside. Can't do that. I said, "Now, I happen to own a, I happen to own a helicopter, excuse me, an EMS service in Florida, so I'm keenly aware of what, what hospitals need for service. They need a building to put their, their squad in." They are, they are currently, I guess, existing in a, you wouldn't know this, but a rundown construction trailer that the county granted them, gave them to use as their crash pad. That's it. This little teeny thing. They need some better facilities there. Middlefield Township put a nice facility in for the community care that lets them put their squads inside. So they can, they don't have to run the engine, how, how environment unfriendly to have to run the engine constantly because you have to, you have to keep the ambulance cool or keep it hot. They need, they need improvements. Another close friend of mine, I'll digress, also is a contract fighter, flies six different small jets for local business and said in addition to not using Jogga County because of its short runway, he would also discourage the businessmen from using our airport as it has no amenities. Pilots get paid to wait while their businessmen do their work. He said he could think of nothing worse than having to sit in an open area in a hard chair for six hours, waiting for his client to show up so he can leave. He said the county needs to make it look like they want pilots to use the airport and not chase them away. He said if he had any say on where to land, he would tell his group to use a different airport. Not a very rosy endorsement for Jogga County. You made the statement that tells me the market is not functioning when you have a high demand, you should, when talking of hangers, when you have demand, you should hire your prices. Unless the news person, who doesn't understand grammatics, I don't quite understand, but I get the point. I have no idea what your background is, but it's obvious to me you have no clue how to run a business or think like a business person. I'm done, I'm done founded that some would actually say the solution to a problem of too many people waiting for hangar space is to raise the rate so high that you chase away everybody until only the highest bidders get a hangar space. It's nonsense. What we have here is even better than the famous saying of the field of dreams. Build it and they will come. We have people here committing to hangar, saying, "How long before I can use it?" Eight, where's forty? There's forty people. Thirty-four people on a waiting list and only eight people get to use the hangar. The county needs to understand there's gonna have to be more hangers built. You made a statement that you haven't seen the facts or figures and how it helps the kids. Get that at all? Seem kind of short-sighted. First of all, and again, I go back to this shock that I just witnessed here that the commissioners say they didn't see anything formal in writing about plans for airport expansion that's been talked about for a year. And they're holding up funding because of that. I'm just, I'm baffled. So, back to the kids. First of all, I commend the local airport community in its aviation chapter five. If we're talking about kids, because it was brought up here. In their relentless quest to get kids involved in aviation, I wish I could do more to help them, but I have no spare time. However, I stand before you, I sit before you, let me say this correctly, I sit before you as one of those former kids that she didn't seem very, didn't speak very highly of in the article. "At seventeen years old, I took a learn-to-fly class at the Geneva High School. Where on graduation, we got to fly and control a real airplane, and I was hooked. I started flying when I turned eighteen, and in fact, I was the first pilot was trained at former Firebrand Aviation, which was based at Jogga County. I was the consummate airport bum. I spent every minute of my days off of the airport doing ever I could to be around airplanes and most importantly pilots. I quickly saw I wanted to be around pilots, never realizing that it eventually lead me to create business that caters to pilots. There is no one I'd rather be around than a pilot. They possess all the fine qualities that make a difference in the world. I will openly state that Commissioner Ralph exhibits these fine qualities. He's smart, he's a pilot, he's a very good businessman. Instead of trying to twist his strong advocacy, as was quoted here, for the improving the airport as some absurd conflict of interest conspiracy theory, the public and the other commissioners should take notice that smart people know the airport is an asset to the community. I know when you'll take notice is when you start funding the airport. I will end by saying that I've built a very successful business that specializes in manufacturing and distributing our own proprietary aircraft parts around the world. What a great success story. A local resident who becomes a pilot, discovers a niche in aviation, builds a successful business catering to aircraft owners, which allowed him to become an aircraft owner himself and who has friends all over the world from the business based in little old Jogga County. What could be cooler than that? End of story.
Thank you for your comments.
If anybody's heard from the media community, welcome to our notes.
Make a motion to go on the executive session.
You need to state the reason why.
Purchase of property.
Yeah, we need the ORC section as well.
Just a report, just a report from you within properties and stuff.
I think Ralph has something wants to talk to you guys about.
A sworn, I'm of late. We are now going to the executive.
I have your term at 10:59.
And with no action from this last meeting.
Just for clarification, I was corrected was O R C one twenty one point two two G two. To consider that question.
Thank you.
So now we're going to public comment and whoever stands up and speaks they get two minutes. Introduce yourself, your name and where you live. Patty.
My name is Patty Fulop and I live at one four nine nine four South State Avenue in Middlefield, Ohio. I came today in hopes of commending this board on financing the needs of the airport. I'm still commending you on at least putting forth a resolution to get to that point. A few years ago, well, quite a few years ago now, there was a conglomerate of experts that put together a plan and a vision for the jug of the airport. Those experts consisted of airport managers, airport board members, this commission that signed off on all of the plans. There is an F A A program manager, an F A A community planner, an F A A specialist on environment. There was a couple of people from O dot Office of Aviation and there was a team of engineers that put everything together for us. And during the process, we had a steering committee, an advisory committee and public input to put the plans together. Out of those plans came three incredible documents. The first is a master plan. The master plan says, here's where we are, here's where we want to go, and these are the steps we're going to take to get there. And it takes into consideration things like the critical aircraft that are there, things like F A A regulations. And then from that document comes another document. That document is the airport layout plan. The airport layout plan gives us a series of maps and drawings that says, this is our airport. This is the surrounding area in our county. This is what we want to do with the airports to comply with that master plan. And those documents have been available for a very long time.
When were those documents done?
Two thousand and thirteen, the last time.
And how?
By this commission.
How could we access them?
They are here or should be here because I sent them myself here.
Okay, I mean, I asked because I actually asked for a mass, like a strategic plan or a master plan. And all I got was like a wish list, so I, that's, I was looking for something like that.
And while you're saying that also, there is a third plan that is the Airport Capital Improvement Plan that is revised every year. And this commission on the top of that plan is teehangers. We have gone through 20 years of those plans and we are to the point now where the commissioners need to make an investment into the airport and fund those teehangers. And I do want to commend you for at least taking the next step. We need to get this put together. Thank you.
Go ahead, go ahead. Say your name.
Skip Clay Cole, Jagger, Chester, Illinois. I want to commend this group of people, the airport folks that showed up today and John for making a fantastic presentation. I'm a former aircraft controller, a former Air Force veteran and a pilot. And I was a kind of commissioner, by the way, Carolyn, I had a copy of that master plan here and just it's in my files. I'll get you a copy of that. But what has John talked about a little bit, and I applaud you Carolyn for your, your looking out for the taxpayers and so forth. But it is a real hard case, and I don't want it to be missed. The ancillary benefit to the community of Middlefield and Jugger County, airports are an asset. And we can't, we don't talk about, sometimes it's hard to put the numbers together for all of the benefits that the county derives out of an airport. And so Patty and I had talked earlier about all of the groups and the kids that go out there and the community that goes out there in the annual air show and so on and so forth. How many people have touched on learning to fly and go out there and they go out to the E A A group that's out there and building airplanes? The community gets so much benefit out of this asset that you can't really put into numbers. We've talked about these, we started this conversation 10 years ago, 12 years ago about the hangars. Those hangars will be a tremendous about a benefit to the airport and help to further its interest. I hope that at some point in time we can purchase some property to extend those runways to bring more utility. But you see middlefield growing right now. There's a lot of companies going into the middlefield area. They can use that airport, even if it's a light or a twin turbo or something to get in and out of there to, to bring their executives back and forth. That airport has a lot of benefits.
Okay, next.
For this, Joe Otto, thank you.
Joe, hand it up first.
My name is Joe Otto, Munchen Township, and I don't have the credentials a lot of these people have, but I do have some questions. Number one, where I see a problem is that we have a business with the airport, which some people think is a balance sheet business and should show black at the bottom. The other people like myself think that it's an asset to the community and should be promoted. I am strongly, and I have to clear this up because I've gotten questions from Rick and other people, what my position one, I'm strongly in favor of improvements at the airport, strongly. Right now, what I'm seeing, it reminds me a little of Zeppelin song, Rambo on. I do a lot of rambling, I heard it today a couple of times. It, it, we start throwing out of cans and, and somebody mentioned, you know, aviation airplanes are a visceral thing. You know, they're love affairs more than they are anything else, I think, was for me at first. What I, what I want to see is when you say, I want to give you eight hundred or a million three, is let me see the documentation that supports that. Simple as that. Basic business is, you know, if, for instance, we have a teahanger being proposed for eight, eight slots. Somebody says, well, it's $4,000 a month. How many contracts do we have to occupy those hangars? It may be very worthwhile, but we also, we have thirty people with one seventy two or one fifty or something that need teahangers. And we can maybe get more money out of it and serve our community better. I strongly agree, the airport is an asset. It's not necessarily a balance sheet. As any, it helps a community like, like I brought up last time I was here, just like a school system. School system, you cannot say the school system has provided this much income to the country. But you know it's a valuable part.
Thank you.
My name is Greg Yelstrom, I'm a board member of the G C A A. I'm a retired CEO who spent the latter half of his career in business jets. I have thirteen assembly plants throughout the Midwest. There was no way I could reach those plants on a daily basis or even on a weekly basis without being able to fly into these rural locations that contained our plants. What I want to talk to you about today is the distinction between maintenance and capital. When you fix a roof, that's maintenance, you fix a hole in the roof. Today we have hangars four and five, which are over 50 years old, which have provided 50 years of revenue to the county. And now we need to replace those roofs. Everybody sitting here has a roof over their house. Does it last 30 years? Maybe if you watch, the roof we have today is 50 years old. The opportunity cost that we will suffer is the fact that it brings in a lot of revenue every year. And pretty soon we're going to have to do something with those hangars. When I did the calculations the other day over the, if we could extend the life of this very, very old set of hangars, it would provide a million dollars of revenue. What's the investment? About ninety grand. So that's about a rough numbers, that's about a thousand percent return on investment. So we just need to distinguish between maintenance and capital. At some point, the building wears out, you can't keep patching the roof. Thank you.
Perfect.
I'm glad you practiced that.
And I'm coming in, I actually live in us, the Tamey Township, because I work out of Jagger County Airport. I graduated from Fargo High School in nineteen sixty eight, the same year the airport was built and dedicated. My senior year in high school, Pittsburgh Institute of Aeroatics came into the school and we're looking for mechanics. I was looking for something in mechanics, went to Pittsburgh, graduated out of Pittsburgh and got a job with Fred Whitney Aircraft down in Florida. I worked with Fred Whitney for 12 years, I had a short stint with Boeing Aircraft. My father was a drainage contractor in the local area. He came, he brought me back to Ohio to, because he was up to retirement age. And I, that's the same year I bought my first airplane. It was a Cherokee one eighty, I paid eight thousand dollars for. It was a Cherokee one eighty, I paid eight thousand dollars for it. There's no way you can buy that airplane today for that kind of money. And I got, I have my K and P license, Airframe and Power Plant. The whole time I owned the airplane. I did my own maintenance and while I worked at Pratt-Wenney, I did maintenance on a lot of other aircraft as a part time thing. That's where I got my start in aviation. I flew from Florida to Jugger County, first time I flew there was nineteen seventy two.
Sorry, you only get two minutes, that's why I have to, yeah, sorry.
Five minutes?
No. That's not allowed in the public policy.
If you'd like to speak, you get to, yeah. Great.
Can't give it to other people though.
David Silver, one three oh three nine third Troy Road, Burton. I use, I use the airport. I have aircraft there. As far as aircraft, let's see, one's a nineteen forty six and one's a nineteen sixty five. So we don't all own China new airplanes, but I use the airport as a base to fly Angel planes. I also own a part time instructor for the glider club and some power plane. Airport is a spawning ground for for aviation careers. One of my students, Katie Groh, she's working in the aerospace industry. Another one of my student pilots is Andrew Whiting, he's working for Jet Jet now. I'm instructing a fourteen year old girl that just sold a glider that her her goal since she's seven years old was to fly for Samaritans first. You know, she's going to do that and she's she's going to do it as her start at Yonkers County Airport. She travels an hour and twenty minutes, come to the glider club to get a lesson because she loves that airport and it's the best place for her to learn. So it's like a lot of people say, you can't really quantify everything that the airport does and and see what the place becomes of it. Because again, we just can't see all that, but anyway, that's that's all I have for it.
Thank you.
Yeah, Diane Jones, Auburn Township, and this has been an interesting discussion. My comments will be brief, we have to leave for another engagement, but I do have some documentation for Mrs. Braking. And this involves considerable amount of research and checking over the last many, many years. And the other one question I have, which remains in my mind, is that if the airport is collecting is collecting all this income from gas receipts, et cetera, et cetera. And is also, you know, the recipient of thirty six hundred plus per month loan payback from the commissioners. Why is it not at this point, more than ten years later, self sufficient? And I'm not asking for an answer, that's just the question I will leave it with. It's been interesting, this meeting, we always learn things. And for my comments, this is for Mrs. Braking's examination.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry, I'm just short. Thank you.
Okay, is there any other comment?
Howard, South Russell Village, we had an airport at one time, it's long gone. Auburn Township had an airport at one time too, it's long gone. Let's not let the Jugger County Airport go the way the other two airports went. You just can't afford to do things like that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Any other comments?
I'd just like to apologize, the last time I spent more than two minutes, I didn't realize there were limits, I apologize.
You're good for like.
My fault and I heard about it too.
You're good for like, you're good for like a year and a half, you're over your, over your time. But.
My question's for Commissioner Spaldini, it's not about the airport. Why did you set up your county email on March eighteen after twelve years of being a commissioner?
Well, that's not correct, it's, I've had an email pretty much from Dave Almond, guys.
Which email is that?
My, my county email.
When did you set it up so that you could use it?
Probably back in twelve, two thousand and twelve.
Apparently you had a, you had it set up on March eighteen, according to public records.
I had, I had a password updated and it was reinstalled on my, on my, my desktop.
So you were checking your county email before that?
Sure, I've checked my email before. Before, before I had this done. Yeah. I know that you had tried to approach me and I was, I guess I I'd like to ask you a question is, when did you make a public information request? Do you just like make a public information request on people changing their passwords? I'm asking you a question because I'm going to be, I'm going to be frank with you. And I'm glad you brought this up in the public so that I could possibly expose this. Because I refuse to talk to you because you, every time I talk to you outside of the public that I give you a statement, what you report and what I told you is selective hearing of what you want to hear and write, so I refuse to talk to you. Well, that's your opinion, not mine. Mine is fact of what I'm telling you, because I know what I have told you in the past and I see what you report. So to 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 further this, okay, I'm going to explain to you what one of the situations that we have had here in the commissioner's office over the last three years. We have had situations where I know that myself, Commissioner Lennon, and also Administrator Morgan had our emails entered in. Where we physically watched one day here in the office where emails were basically showing being opened and then being closed again. Okay, so it's real, it's it's real interesting that all of a sudden you come up to me and say that, you know, that I had X number of emails on my email. But what you're basically doing is this, I'm going to ask for an investigation, probably with the sheriff's office to investigate this because you're going to be a witness of who told you this. Because whoever's telling you this is probably who's been behind opening emails. Okay, we have sensitive documents in our emails of attorney client privilege. And those emails are basically, somebody is getting into my emails, which obviously they got into my email to be able to tell you what my unread email was. Most of that email, it's no different than your personal email. There's J C Penney ads, Coles ads and every other thing in there that'll fill your email with thousands of stuff that I don't even look at. But what I will tell you is this, is there are also some attorney client privileged emails that go along with those that whoever is getting into there and it's and and you by your statement have proven that that's happening.
No, I don't think so.
And how do you not think so?
If they were privileged, then why do you use a Yahoo email?
That I I basically, I have a Yahoo email that I get that I get agenda. People send me stuff, I can't stop you from sending me for people for sending me stuff on my Yahoo email.
Is it not true that you do county business on your Yahoo email?
I don't do county business on my email. If I check an email that comes through on my personal email, I read it. Okay?
Well, thank you for giving that response.
Well, and I'm going to tell you that, you know, I appreciate you bringing this to my attention also because of the fact that this is definitely a situation where you're part of the, you're part of the situation here of being a witness to who it is that probably is going into our system.
It's a public record that I requested because I've never.
Okay, so you, so let me ask you, so you just decided that one day to request the public record of my email being being reset?
It wasn't, to my knowledge.
I might have been born at night, but not last night. Okay, so don't insult me with your nonsense. That you all of a sudden were told that you you just out of the blue woke up one morning and requested information about my county email and my password being reset.
My question was why are you not using your county email?
My, my answer to you is as I am. Yes. Good enough?
I didn't really get an answer.
Well, I, and and once again, here we go with your selective hearing. I said yes. You know, you're going to, you're going to sit in here and basically say this, I've had emails set up since two thousand and twelve when I came here as commissioner. And 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 I made the choice personally to not effectively engage myself with that email until Commissioner, till County Administrator Morgan left, because I had it basically when I came back and saw that. I was not going to get engaged into my email at all so that I could testify under oath to say one hundred percent that I had no access, no, no involvement with my email at all during that course of time, if there was any allegations made made to me. Because I could tell you this, I saw it with my own two eyes, Jerry Morgan saw with his own two eyes and Commissioner Lennon saw it with his own two eyes that county emails are being read, opened and read in this county. And it's a problem. And it's a problem that you have made, basically made it very clear that that's a problem. And whoever's telling you that is probably involved in opening the emails. So I appreciate you bringing this to my attention because now I can act on it.
I appreciate your explanation.
Thank you.
Any more public comment?
Newspaper now too, the problems that have occurred should be in the newspapers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, but seeing no other public comment, I have, one thing I like to bring up is that there's a G C T A meeting April ninth in Monston and I make a motion to, if she can make it, Amy Thieven, the our next administrator to attend that meeting. That's my motion.
You turn up the township association.
Yeah.
There's a cost for that, right? We haven't set up that.
I was gonna go, but she could go at my place.
Yeah, that was, that was, I think, what the agreement was when we originally set the R S.
I think if she would be on board by then, but yeah, yeah, may not be the case.
Okay.
If she can go, then she'll go, if not, you. You'll attend.
And I'm not opposed to both of them wanting to attend also that they could, you know, introduce her to different people also.
I think the R S P date has passed, but we could try, yeah, we can try.
Just give it a try.
Okay, so Commissioner, Commissioner Braking.
Yep. Your motion returned.
So much.
All favor.
Bye.
Thank you.